All meeting board, please rise. We have a moment of silence to keep our troops and our law enforcement and our thoughts and prayers that they come home safe. Thank you. Flight?
United States of America, considering all the forces stands, one nation under our individual with a reading justice for all.
The address of this meeting pursuant to the ODP Act and JSA technical report dash China pilot will be entered into the management committee.
Roll call?
Fielder Armwood?
Here.
Fielder Kenny? Fielder Cappel? Fielder Nara?
Here.
Fielder Tamara?
Here.
Fielder Valenti? Fielder Director Rio?
Here. Fielder Minister Cool?
Board of General Fielder regular meetings and December 21st, 2017 and Board of General Fielder reorganization, January 3rd, 2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Deputy Director Tamara, second by Fielder Nara? Roll call?
Fielder Armwood?
Yes.
Fielder Kenny? Fielder Cappel?
Yes.
Fielder Nara?
Yes.
Fielder Tamara?
Yes.
Fielder Director Rio?
Yes. I jump that yes we shift for back to the correspondents.
Each Fielder can go up provided the list of correspondents received by the third office in our last meeting is correspondently kept on file along with the Board of Referees.
So a motion to accept?
Motion to accept, first on this?
Second?
Motion by Deputy Director Tamara, second by Fielder Armwood. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reports of Fielders, Fielder Ken Armwood.
Thank you, Fielder Director. From the Business Development and Education Department, Office of Arts and History. The new year brings great new programs, Text Culture to 56512. For more details and to explore everything arts, history, and culture. President's Day Celebration will be held at Old Queens Tavern at East Jersey Old Town Village on Sunday, February 25th with an American Historical Theater presentation of a conversation with James Madison. An opportunity like no other to understand how our nation's founding principles took shape. From Middlesex County College. Middlesex County College has introduced an intensive three-week session entitled "Winter Session" where courses are open to current and visiting students. The Continuing Education Division has expanded opportunities with new classes for adults as well as youth including hands-on cooking classes, drone UAV repair and maintenance, and financial planning for special needs. From the Office of Workforce Development, several recruitment initiatives are underway including advanced manufacturing firm Cascades, container board packaging in Biscayne, Text Workforce to 56512, to explore everything jobs. And obviously, the news came out today that we did not win the hands-on sweepstakes. So although they made a bad mistake, we do wish our fellow state contender Norwold well. And I do believe that if they do choose Norwold, there are ancillary benefits that we can reap. But they should have chose Middlesex County. And I'll close my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Fielder Armwood. Fielder Charlie Kenny?
Thank you, Director. So far this year, we've had eight winter events with snowfall accumulation of about 16 to 18 inches with the southern end of the county having higher amounts. In case you haven't noticed, we've had an unusual stretch of extended cold weather around here and with about 14 days in a row below the freezing mark. This has caused about 33 water main breaks on our county roads as they flow out when the temperature is kind enough to get above 32 degrees. And it has also caused potholes, in case you haven't noticed. Our crews have been out filling the potholes throughout the county. If you'd like to report a pothole, please go to the Middlesex County website. Go to Departments, click on Public Works, and fill out the complaint form. And then it will be handled internally from there. So if you're watching this at home and you know that pothole that you keep hitting, please go to our county website, Departments, click on Public Works, and fill out the complaint form. I would like to take this time to thank all of our county employees from the various offices such as Public Works, Parks, facilities, and others for their hard work and determination to keep our county roads cleared, our buildings open, and our parking lots clear of snow and ice and safe for the use of the employees and the public. I particularly want to thank them for the efforts during the snowstorm on January 4th, 2012 when they worked tirelessly to keep the roads clear for motorists and emergency vehicles for a storm that lasted about 48 hours. I also want to commend our Middlesex County Ranger Unit. As happens sometimes during periods of inclement weather, the County Ranger Unit helps to assist other county employees that need to get to work. And they were helpful in transporting 12 nurses to and from the Roseville Care Center at crucial times. I'm never surprised with the dependability of all our employees, but always proud of their fine performance. When winter is... Oh. So we go from the winter to spring. In case you don't know, pitchers and catchers report in about less than 30 days. And with that in mind, we are looking to start our springtime softball league. So that would be the Middlesex County Recreation Adult Slow-Pick Softball League with sessions planned for both the spring and the fall. Those interested can register now and begin play as early as April 2018. The deadline to enter the spring league is March 16th. And the leagues are formed on a first come, first served basis, so you can send your roster soon. And that would go into our Parks Department? Am I correct? That would go into our Parks Department. And then to get in shape for the softball season and to still enjoy the winter season, our ice skating rink is still open and will be open through April 1st, 2018. So if you want to build up that core strength, that leg strength, or hit that softball, it's a beautiful facility, has a lot to offer year-round, including open skating, birthday parties, rink rentals, and skating lessons. All information can be found on our county website in the Parks Recreation section. That's all I have, Director.
Thank you. Fielder Leslie Cappel?
Thank you, Fielder Director. County revenues. In order to maintain our AAA bond rating and an end in conjunction with our overall fiscal strategy, over the past eight years, the county has eliminated relying on one-time revenue sources to balance the annual gross budgets. We have replaced non-sustainable one-time revenue sources with recurring revenues such as shared service revenues, which eliminates uncertainties and the volatile fluctuations in annual budgets. In 2017, our shared services brought in over $6.8 million in revenues, the greatest of which being the Regional Medical Examiner's Office and Youth Services Center agreements. In 2017, the county exceeded anticipated budgeted revenues by $1.7 million where the two biggest drivers were county clerk's revenues and investment on deposits. County clerk revenues are generated by fees derived from the sale of properties, so the increase in revenue is indicative of a strong economy here in Middlesex County. In 2017, interest earned on deposits increased by over half a million dollars or an impressive 123% over 2016. This is a direct result of the county's short- and long-term investment strategies. Thank you for the time, Director.
Thank you. Fielder Chantinara?
Thank you, Director. In 2017, the Environmental Recycling Division conducted numerous free events for county residents. The following are the 2017 totals of recycled and collected materials. So starting with paper shreds. The divisions collected and shredded 298,490 pounds of paper during 19 events from 6,877 county residents. For the paint collection sites, at our 10 drop-off sites, the county collected 510,203 pounds of latex paint, 88,490 pounds of oil-based paint and stains, and 9,007 pounds of aerosols for a total of 604,259 pounds from 5,884 residents. Household hazardous waste collections. The divisions collected 500,031 pounds of material from 4,378 residents during our six collection days in this past year. Electronic e-waste. At the two e-waste collection events in 2017, the county collected 1,331,167 pounds of electronic devices, which included televisions, computers, monitors, and the like from 1,330 residents. 386.58 tons of tires were collected and recycled at our five permanent residential drop-offs, as well as those collected by the county. As far as compost bins, the divisions also have compost bins available to residents at a reduced cost. These bins break down organic matter into a nutrient-rich soil that can be utilized for gardening and planting. In 2017, the divisions conducted over 2,000 inspections to ensure that industrial sites and businesses were complying with recycling guidelines. It is our pleasure to report that the sites were compliant, making Middlesex County, once again, the leader in the state for recycling compliance. Please let's all do our part and recycle, keeping Middlesex County a cleaner and greener place to live, work, and visit. All upcoming 2018 events that include recycling information, paper shreds, household hazardous waste collections, and the various other free services the county offers its residents are available on the county's website. Please visit the website for this information, or our residents can call the divisions at 732-745-4170. The Office of Health Services applied for and received a grant from the New Jersey Department of Health for an enhanced childhood lead poisoning prevention program. This upgraded program is a result of the state's initiative that lowered the blood lead levels in a child from 10 micrograms to 5 micrograms. The additional grant funds will provide added staff who will identify, track, and case-manage the children that are identified as needing treatment and exposure reduction. The county submitted the grant on behalf of all municipalities in the county and will be entering into sub-grant agreements with the townships of Edison and Woodbridge to assist carrying out this initiative. And I'm going to add something to my report because just today I received two emails from the New Jersey Office of the Attorney General and the Department of Law and Public Safety. And specifically, it relates to the Juvenile Justice Commission. This commission is mandated by law to conduct inspections and review the different various juvenile detention centers. And the two letters I received today were regarding the results of their inspection of Armwood Middlesex County Juvenile Detention Center. And not only are we in compliance, but the word excellent popped up throughout the letter regarding our overall compliance with all of the state guidelines, but also specifically relating to suicide prevention. So I wanted to just give a shout-out to, obviously, Warden Cranston, but also to Superintendent Jim White and Assistant Superintendent Dave Chippendale and all the staff at the Juvenile Detention Center because the letters really were glowing for all of their efforts. So I thank them for keeping up standards above and beyond in Middlesex County.
Thank you. Fielder Deputy Director Charlie Tamara?
I'll report for this evening. Okay, I would just like to echo Fielder Kenny to be more honest as far as the snow removal. I want to thank all our folks that are involved in the snow removal and salting, salt-spreading throughout the county. They did a tremendous job and it was very, very challenging at times in certain locations, or even more challenging whether it be they need bridges or underpasses where it just gets worse and worse. And I want to thank them for that. I had a meeting today with a few representatives from different governing bodies throughout the county and with my colleague, Blanquita Valenti, in reference to Code Blue requirements and with our staff and just to reaffirm and re-educate, let's say, some of our folks out there on Mormon centers and what the Code Blue stands for and how important it is.
Okay, Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
At this time, I open up the meeting to the public. I have the resolutions listed. You state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Charles Cradaville. I'm from New Brunswick, and I'm the editor of community newspaper, New Brunswick Today. I'd like to ask about 18-22R sponsored by Deputy Director. This is an appointment of Laura Swarneski. Can Mr. Tamara say, do you know this person?
No, I don't personally know her on that.
Okay, then can you tell me why you sponsored a resolution to appoint her?
It was recommended from the Board to put her on as a board member for the application.
Okay, and do any of the Freeholders here tonight know this person?
Yes.
Okay, and you think she'll be a good fit for the county vote tech board?
Yes, I do, absolutely.
Isn't it true that you just appointed her to the Middlesex County College Board last month?
That was an oversight that we didn't realize that she couldn't serve as a councilperson of Jamesburg. So it was brought to her attention, and she resigned at the college, and she is now... But if she gets approved tonight, she'll be on the vote tech board.
Okay, so she resigned from the position she was just appointed?
That's correct.
Okay, and can you tell me who recommended her for that position?
It was either Mr. Tamara or myself.
I believe you were the sponsor. So I have to ask how that oversight happened. Isn't there a trustee search committee that makes recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell me who serves on that committee?
Mr. Pulamina?
And... Gerald Clonbeath from our Superintendent of Schools and Locations. Two other people I just...
Lonsky.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Lonsky and also Dave Lonsky from New Brunswick. And I agree with Mr. Jones.
Yeah, Lonsky, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I can't forget I don't want to just block you from it. Those are the individuals that make up the search committee. And we made the recommendations based on her resume, based on her experience, for the position at the County College.
Okay, my concern would be that the folks on the search committee must not have been familiar with the statutes of the state of New Jersey that prevent elected officials from being appointed. Either that, or they were unaware she was an elected official. If they reviewed her resume, presumably, they know she's an elected official. So how did this oversight happen?
Well, as I said, I take full responsibility for that as the head of the search committee for reviewing it. Was not familiar with the qualification and not happened to be serving the position at the time. It was brought to the attention to me by county council, so I take full responsibility for that oversight.
Okay, so you're the head of the search committee?
That is correct.
Oh, okay, so you and three others?
That is correct.
Okay, and the same rule regarding elected officials does not apply to the vote tech board?
That's correct. Doesn't really apply to many, but that's the reason for the oversight. It was something that, again, throughout the diligence, we assumed that the rules applied to any of the school positions. Didn't have that caveat, but which it did, so we did not realize that at the time.
Okay, and so that means there's a vacancy on the MCC board, is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, it's not being filled tonight?
That is correct.
Okay. Do you want to ask about the contract with Kelso and Burgess? Can you tell me the value of this contract, how much it was last year, and whether or not it was publicly bid?
It's the same contract terms that exist each year when this is renewed by the Freeholder Board. Hopefully, again this evening, it's on an hourly rate. So depending on what work is performed under that contract. Contract refers to certain engineering projects, usually when there's road acquisitions to be done. There's also environmental prosecution that's involved in that. Open space acquisitions that the firm is involved in them and they're not involved in any of them. There are bond opinions that are required for bonds that are issued by the county, which the law firm is required to provide those opinions and also matters associated with Roseville Care Center.
Okay, well, that's a lot of work. And so that's in addition to your duties as county council. Your firm also does all this work as well. How about the Lex Goldman Spencer John Hoffman? Is that publicly bid?
They are professional service contracts which are reviewed through qualifications. There is a public notice for people to submit their qualifications. Qualifications are reviewed. Those firms that are qualified for the various matters that they respond to are then requested to submit proposals.
Okay, but there's not an official bidding process?
No, there's no bidding process for professional services. Under the law, they are not intended to serve.
87, 88, 89 are agreements with the parking authority. Can you just tell me the amount, the number of cars that you're leasing or buying from the authority in these three resolutions?
And can you answer that?
We could get that to you at a later date, but right now, we don't have that available to us.
That's fine.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Mr. First Buckler, fourth?
Second?
Motion by Deputy Director Tamara, second by Fielder Armwood, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, are there any Freeholders that have to coordinate separately?
Fielder Director, 18-59.
Anyone else?
18-59, Director.
Anybody else? No? Okay, Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Fielder Director. A motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers 18-20 through resolution 18-122, excluding resolution 18-52 and resolution 18-59, if you voted upon separately.
Is there a motion? Who?
Second?
Motion by Deputy Director Tamara, second by Fielder Armwood. Roll call?
Fielder Armwood?
Yes.
Fielder Kenny?
Yes.
Fielder Cappel?
Yes.
Fielder Nara?
Yes.
Fielder Tamara?
Yes.
Fielder Director Rio?
Yes. And now, Fielder Director, would it be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Fielder Tamara? And that is resolution 18-52.
Motion?
Second?
Motion by Fielder Kenny, second by Fielder Armwood. Roll call?
Fielder Armwood?
Yes.
Fielder Kenny? Fielder Cappel?
Yes.
Fielder Nara?
Yes.
Fielder Tamara?
Present on voting.
Fielder Director Rio?
Yes. And finally, Fielder Director, would it be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Fielder Kenny? And that's resolution 18-59.
Motion?
Motion by Fielder...
Second?
Tamara, second by Fielder Armwood. Roll call?
Fielder Armwood?
Yes.
Fielder Kenny?
Present on voting.
Fielder Cappel?
Yes.
Fielder Nara?
Yes.
Fielder Tamara?
Yes.
Fielder Director Rio?
Yes.
At this time, I open up the meeting to the public. On anything anyone wants to speak on, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Calpham from North Brunswick. I really believe you're still in collusion with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority Agency. Had a meeting, we were discussing the Meadows Golf Course. Maybe said the county is the primary owner, correct?
The county is the owner.
The county is the primary owner.
Yes.
And I told you, they go to the website of the Improvement Authority. And on the website, did you ever look? They said they were the owner and the operator of the Meadows Golf Course. Now, that stuff been wiped out this past week, all that information. They put new information on the website, saying that 1999, the Improvement Authority purchased the golf course as an owner. In 2014, they transferred it over to the county government. Do you agree with that?
That's accurate, that's...
Is it accurate?
Yes, that's accurate.
Who put up the money in 1999 to purchase the Meadows Golf Course? Was the county putting up the money for the Improvement Authority, the four and a half million dollars? Or you don't know?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer for that.
Now, when they turned over the Meadows Golf Course to the county government, did you have to buy it from them?
Yes.
For how much?
The county acquired it for... There was an assumption of a debt that occurred, and there was additional cash payment. And I don't recall any of that.
How much money?
I don't recall any of that.
There's something going on here that's not right. Okay, we're gonna iron this out eventually. For 43 years, since that Tanarak Golf Course was opened, there was no golf out there ever to be played there. In the last couple of years, the Improvement Authority saved plenty of golf outings there. The Improvement Authority had their own charity golf outing there. And I went to the website, and they took the $22,000. Don't show any place where they played for their green trees, the courts, or the driving range for that there golf outing. And I found out they didn't pay anything to the Tanarak Golf Course. And the other golf outings didn't pay any money to the golf course. They're paying it to the Improvement Authority. Anybody that plays golf there has to pay to the cashier at the Tanarak Golf Course so they can report their revenue. You better look into that to find out why.
I'm not sure what you're suggesting, but the MCI A manages the golf course on behalf of...
I don't care if they manage the golf course. They gotta pay just like everybody else. And if they got people that work for the Improvement Authority and think they can play free golf there, you got another problem. Nobody can play free golf at that golf course. It's in the agreement. In that agreement, you had seven days to terminate. I don't think you said anything. I don't know who they're looking at because we're in collusion with them. We also talked about that there new pickup truck they just purchased at the golf course with the emblems on there for the three county golf courses. You got county registered plates on it. That means the county owns that, their vehicle, and they had good insurance on it and everything else. You can look into that also. I also, going back to a few meetings, you said you turned the agreement into the Justice Department. I asked them.
No, that's not...
And if you see man...
That's not accurate.
Because then they had a meeting, a board...
That's not accurate, sir. It was turned over to the Attorney General's Office of the State of New Jersey.
And also something with the Justice Department.
No, I never saw that.
I remember it.
Never saw that.
Well, anyway, the Justice Department got the agreement from me, and they're gonna do an investigation to find out what's going on with elected officials in Middlesex County. And hopefully, we get to the bottom of this and have it corrected. All right, now that's all I'm gonna have to say. You can start looking, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes. We didn't get Freeholders, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. So will you apologize to me now, or should we do this later regarding your little reception after the reorg meeting?
You're talking to me?
Yeah, yeah.
And you want an apology from me?
Yeah, I was not permitted in.
I'm sorry, in reference to what?
The reception that you spoke about at the end of the public meeting.
Okay.
You didn't let me in to the...
Up, up, up. Let's set the record straight. I said at the reorganization meeting that there's a reception following the reorganization meeting that is sponsored by the Middlesex County Democratic Organization. That was it. Now, I don't run the Middlesex County Democratic Organization. And it wasn't me that said you can't go in there. There were other people there that said that you weren't allowed.
Yeah, put their hand on me.
Not just you, anyone from the press, from what I understand.
Okay, so that's the rule, even though I'm a Democrat, for the record.
I don't make the...
I was barred. They put their hands on me, and police told me I'm not allowed in.
Those were rules set up by the Middlesex County Democratic Organization that sponsored the reception.
Okay, then I think you might need to change your party's name because it's more like the Anti-Democratic Party or maybe the Pay-to-Play Party. Because what was going on there was that your donors and the contractors that the county hires and the judiciary was there with you. There was liquor there too, right?
I can't answer who was there and who was invited or who was rejected. All I can tell you is that I was there, and it was a party that was... Or reception that was sponsored by the Middlesex County Democratic Organization.
Which is led by Christie appointee to the Port Authority. And I think that the party has a long way to go. But let's get back to the government here. Is it fair to say that there's no ethics board meeting scheduled for this year? I've inquired and haven't gotten any responses. Is there an ethics board meeting scheduled?
No, I believe there's a meeting. There's a meeting scheduled.
When would that be?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, and there's still a vacancy on that board, right? You guys pointed at Reverend Kenneth Saunders to the board.
There was a vacancy.
Just like Ms. Swarneski resigned before even attending a meeting. When are you gonna fill the vacancy?
We'll have to figure that out, and you will be first to know.
Okay, I'd like to be considered to be appointed, as I've said before.
Submit your resume.
I will. Anybody make it to the county college event with Buster Rhimes?
I was not there. I don't know who else was there. I did not attend.
I thought that was a very poor choice, honestly.
But you'd have to take that with the government.
Okay, I mean, I just thought that was a really poor choice, given what he's on the record as doing just two and a half years ago and saying... and saying homophobic slurs to the person that he was assaulting. And a racist remark, too. That's not the type of person that the Democrat Party and the governor should be inviting and celebrating to the county college. How about your state-of-the-county address? I appreciate it. You mentioned the Institute of the Arts is coming. Gonna be a part of the new high-rise here. Can you tell me what that entails? What is the Middlesex County Institute of the Arts?
It's gonna be an educational piece to our arts program, our arts, our whole arts program that we have, and with the new construction over there. It's gonna be a beautiful addition. You wanna elaborate, Mr. Pulamina?
As you well know, the investment that the county is making in the arts to provide the support to municipalities as well as the county, that there's an organization structure that will be required to make sure that we put the right programs and services in place. We have some of that today on the leadership of Kathy Short, Department of Business and Education. However, we're looking to expand that footprint and expand to municipalities and be able to utilize the former arts facilities to achieve that. As a result, we want to put that under the umbrella of the arts so it brings a greater recognition and importance to the role that it will play in the growth of our community.
Okay, it'll be one floor or two floors of the county's office space there?
We have acquired two floors, and at a minimum, it will be one floor at this point in time.
Okay. Neil Rossi, still a sheriff's officer? The guy who's convicted?
I don't know. The only other person that might know would be our humans.
No, I'm not sure. I know there's some issues going on, but I don't know if he's still currently active or unpaid, or his, I don't know what the situation is.
He was convicted, so you might want to look into that. And, you know, I'll disclose by saying that, you know, I'm ashamed of my party. I'm a Democrat, but I want the party to be better. And I hope that you guys can be more grassroots because it's not grassroots. Anyone else just look at donations? Just look at donations.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Fielder Kenny, second by Fielder Harman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Director Chantinara, second by Fielder Harman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.